Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular meeting of the City Kingman Council, Kingman City Council on Tuesday, October 6, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lingan Felter.
Present.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins.
Here.
I'm here.
Jessica Cooper of Hope City Church.
Okay, so can you hear me okay? Father, we just praise you and we thank you, Father, that we are able to come together and pray. And so, Father, we pray over this meeting tonight. And, Father, we ask you, Lord, for all the decisions that need to be made, Father, that we pray that they would be made in a way, Father, that, that, Lord, that everyone would be motivated to pursue what you're wanting to do in this community, what you're wanting to implement, what you're wanting to grow, what you're wanting to create. Father, I pray for every council member. I pray for their households. I pray for their health. I pray for them individually, Father, and I pray, Lord, for the positions that you place them in. Father, I pray that they be innovative in the ideas and in what you reveal to them and show them for the plans for this city and what they're saying themselves, each one of them will implement and be a part of this decision-making together in unity as this, as this council you put together, Father. So, we pray tonight, Father, that, that everything that goes forward, Father, is, is going to benefit our city. And, Father, we pray, Father, for our city and the people within our city, while we pray protection. Father, we pray that, that this COVID, Father, that it's under control, Father, and we pray for the ones that have dealt with it and the ones that are dealing with it, while we pray healing over their bodies in the name of Jesus. So, Father, we thank you, Lord, for this meeting, and we thank you, Father, that you will have your way. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, and your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, if I may, just for one second. Just as protocol, we have the room set out with, with at least six feet of social distancing. So, as people are sitting in their seats, if they would wish, they can take their masks off. But as people move around, we would ask that people put their masks back on. But we've set the room out for safety, and so that's currently what our protocol has been. So, we're going to follow that.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 384310383 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Our first order of business is appointments, and we have some to consider for the Transit Advisory Commission. The Transit Advisory Commission consists of five members. There are currently three active members and two vacancies. Two applications are on file. The interested applicants are Deborah Adler and Jennifer Hayes, and staff recommends approval. Are any of those candidates here on Zoom or by phone or by comment?
I do have a written comment from Jennifer Hayes to share. For so many people, it is the only way there to get around town and to doctor's appointments or work. I have lived in Kingman for four years now and would like to be more involved in any way that I can to help Kingman with future growth. I work with the Workforce Daily, and transportation is a big part of getting companies to continue to come in to provide good-paying jobs for, for people to get to them. Thank you, Jennifer Hayes.
Thank you, Annie. And there are two applications in our packet. So, has everyone had a chance to look at those? And who is on the transit? Who is the lead?
I am. You know, I, it's a great commission. We haven't been able to meet because of what's been going on. And so, I'm sad to hear that we've lost people, but I'm glad that we have some qualified candidates or good-looking, someone who's volunteered to be on the commission.
From the application, it looks like Deborah Adler would make a, a good applicant. So, would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept those who have applied to be on this commission. Ms. Adler and Ms. Hayes.
Is there a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the appointments of Deborah Adler and Jennifer Hayes to the Transit Advisory Commission. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll have a proclamation, it's a proclamation for fire prevention week, and I'm going to read this proclamation and then, at a later time, meet with Chief Rhodes and some members of our fire department to actually present this to them. Whereas, "Fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire." And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Serve up fire safety in the kitchen", "Plan and practice your escape", effectively serves to remind us that fire prevention is a recurring practice to guard against loss of life and property. And whereas in 2018, Arizona's national average was point... affecting us. So, I will proudly give this to him on our behalf in the near future.
Mayor, as a housekeeping rule or order, it's going to be really important that we, we speak into the microphone. I just got a text.
Should I reread that? Because I just realized I wasn't speaking into the microphone.
Yeah, I didn't realize the microphone wasn't picking it up, so...
Oh, is that what it was?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I did notice a distinct difference.
Yeah.
I could reread. No, I won't reread it.
Just, just...
But I will speak it. I did notice that it does, it wasn't carrying very far, and it was really good information.
So, I wasn't, I wasn't, I didn't connect the speakers to the microphone, but when we can't hear it through the speaker, they can't hear you on the Zoom meeting. So, very important. And if we don't hear you, we'll stop you and make sure that we, we get that fixed.
Please do, because seriously, this proclamation gave some really good advice to everyone, to think about your escape routes when you, before you have a fire, and also to plan that out and to be very safe, since most house fires, it sounds like, start in the kitchen. And so, thank you, Manager Foggan. Okay, the next, the next order of business is call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Now, we know that tonight is a hybrid meeting. There's in-person attendance, call-in participation, and written comments that have been accepted. But all of these, regardless of these actions, action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Thank you. It's, oh, that's much better. Comments from the public will be restricted items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group, and comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. And the first type of comment we'll listen to tonight would be in-person. For anyone who has pre-registered, we will have it on first come, first served. Did anyone pre-register for in-person call to the public?
I have no one, Mayor.
Thank you, Annie. Then the second type of, of comment comes from call-ins. Those wishing to address the council by telephone will need to pre-register by 9:00 a.m. this morning or email the city clerk with their name, address, and telephone number. Annie, I...
I do have one registrant, Jennifer Esposito. I will admit her into the Zoom now.
Thank you.
Ms. Esposito, you have been entered into the meeting.
Ms. Esposito, please give your name and city, and you have three minutes to comment.
Hello?
Hello, Ms. Esposito. Please give us your name and city, and you have three minutes to comment.
Thank you. This is Jennifer Esposito, 3211 East Mainly, Kingman. Pursuant to Attorney General Opinion 199-06, a public officer, quote, "may not dialogue with the presenter." Also, quote, "Public bodies may impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on speakers. Restrictions must be narrowly tailored to affect a compelling state interest and may not be content-based." Your ignorance of open meeting law a couple meetings ago was shocking to me. You may not like what someone has to say, but you cannot interrupt them or hang up on them, as you did to me at that meeting last month. The spirit of the law is such that I can absolutely say that I think you have incompetent legal counsel. As a matter of fact, it's such that I could probably say things far more provocative than that. You know, the, the thing is, is you can only sit there quietly and listen and respond when someone's time is up. The important thing to mention, however, is when I was illegally disconnected from that meeting, I was asking a very important question. What I wanted to know is whether or not you can confirm or deny the rumor that I heard that $80,000 worth of municipal swimming pool money is missing or unaccounted for, and if any monies are missing, what is being done about it? Thank you.
And I thought Zoom had problems. Okay, and then the third type of comment we accepted were written comments that would be submitted by 9:00 a.m. this morning by emailing city clerk at City of Kingman or dropping off handwritten comments at the city complex at 310 North Fourth Street. Did we receive any written comments? We received no written comments. Therefore, we'll move on to the consent agenda. But I would mention that for those that are listening and members of the public can watch or listening, listen to these meetings live via Channel 4 or on our YouTube at youtube.com/cityofkingman. And we hope a lot of people will take advantage of that and be able to watch us. So, we move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items that any of the council members would like to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion? Sorry. Have a lot of X. Are there any other items that I would like to be removed? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items A through Y, with the exception of item X. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to accept item A through Y, with the exception of X on the consent agenda. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any opposed, nay? Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda item X, FAA Airport Land Release Project Consultant Contract. In late 2018, the city began the process to release over 1,800 acres of surplus property at the airport. This spring, a telephonic meeting was initiated with staff, FAA, and project consultants to develop an updated project schedule and move forward on Phase 2 environmental assessment and federal release process of the surplus, surplus airport properties. The current goal, depending on federal responses, is to attempt to complete this project by April 2021. Total cost for the second phase of the project is $186,774. Staff recommends approval. Vice Mayor. Mine works, but I'm not giving it up.
Okay. All right. Well, technology, there's no shortage of speed bumps. We appreciate everybody's indulgence. This is, of course, our, our first time back in, so trying to get the wrinkles ironed out. So, we are absolutely excited to be working with our, our team from the airport and with our consultant, who is actually on the line, just in case anybody has questions. But as far as this project goes, we're in, we're in basically conversations with the FAA, answering their questions. And with, with this effort, we're, of course, we've asked the council to put the land release on the, basically on the ballot for citizens to give us the, or not give us the approval, to sell the property. But in, in, in that process, we have to work with the FAA to get this land released, and we're, we're, we're on the home stretch. And the team is working really well with the FAA. I can't say, you know, I know the feds get a little bit of a bad rep, but I, I will say our regional manager, Mike Williams, and his team have been phenomenal, and we have every confidence that we will get the land release granted by the FAA in April. So, we're in the home stretch. As Vice Mayor indicated, this attempt was made back in the late 2000s, and for one reason or another, didn't, didn't get, didn't get done. And we're going to make it now, so... Yeah, it's, they've been plugged in. I don't know. Yeah, yeah, that's a question for Annie. Yeah, I believe it is.
And there are frequently asked questions on the city's website.
Yeah, that's correct. So, there is basically a fact sheet with the frequently asked questions, and encourage everybody to go take a look at that if they have questions.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion...
Mayor, this is Carl Cooper.
Oh, Mr. Cooper, please go ahead.
I just want to let you know, we're having some difficulty hearing some of you folks talking, especially if there's some crosstalk. We couldn't hear the Vice Mayor's question at all. And then, when Annie was responding, we couldn't hear those comments either. So, we just might want to be careful with the, with the mics, I guess. I'm not sure.
We are playing musical mics. But, yeah, go ahead.
I would, if you're ready for it, I'd make a motion to approve item X. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve item X regarding the FAA Airport Land Release Project Consultant Contract. Is there a second?
I'd like to second that.
Thank you both. We'll give that to Counselor Keener. And we have a motion and a second to approve this contract. All in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. We have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. Item A, Resolution Number 5304, opposing the transfer of 4th Priority Colorado River Water. This is a resolution to oppose the transfer of 4th Priority Colorado River Water to GSE Farms LLC from, these farms, to the town of Queen Creek. I think that too is supposed to be from. But staff recommends approval. And Manager Foggan, would you like to go ahead and talk, speak to this?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So, there has been an effort by what we'll just say is Metro Phoenix area, Maricopa County, to secure water from every source that they possibly can find. And one of those sources that, that Queen Creek, in this case, have identified is the Color, some Colorado water. And that would require, what happens with that is that both Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City have capacity within Bullhead River for future water use as they grow. And so, the idea of this is that Queen Creek sees that extra capacity. They need water to continue to grow. So, they've asked for approval to have the Colorado River water transferred to them. And so, and what their argument is, is it's not being used, it's running past, and it belongs to Arizona. Well, the reality is, it belongs to our sister cities. And so, by giving up that water to another city, future growth is in jeopardy for our sister cities. And then, the question then arises, well, this doesn't have any effect on the City of Kingman, and it does not have a direct effect on us. But as a sister city in the tri-city area, water issues and support go both ways. And as we're looking for support from our sister cities on our groundwater, they're looking for support for their river water. And so, that's how this ended up as, on our agenda. They're looking for community support for their partners. And so, that's what this resolution really speaks to, is that we think that water that belongs to our sister cities should be left with our sister cities.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. I, I'll add just a few comments. That we've had several meetings regarding this transfer and with the Mojave County Water Authority, because, as you know, we are a member, as we all are, our sister cities, and, and the, the Water Authority has already issued a, a resolution, which we've signed, that is very similar to the one that's presented to this council. The, and in fact, today, I received a message from the Mayor of Yuma wanting a lot of the river mayors to, to meet tomorrow to have a joint mayor letter to, to the same impact as this, basically opposing it. Queen Creek had asked for over 2,000 acre feet transferred to them. And as it turned out, Arizona Department of Water Resources, even though that was originally opposed by all of us, has recommended to the Department of Interior that about half of that be transferred. And, and that's not a good precedent. And that's, that's something that we have all agreed needs to be opposed by, at every level that, that is impacted, including us. As Manager Foggan said, though it's not direct, it is certainly, it's direct on our sister cities. So, that's why it's here this evening. In addition, it calls, we're calling for a number of steps to be taken before that transfer could, could take place, and including a very extensive environmental study and other things that can take place under the process that's going to come, come before us. There'll be notices in the Federal Register. There'll be other opportunities to comment. But this is a really ground, this lays the foundation for that opposition going forth to oppose this from all of us that, that are part of this coalition. So, I appreciate the council's consideration and hope that we will pass this resolution to support our, our sister cities and our Colorado River water. Any questions or comments about...
I would just, you and I had gone down over a year ago to testify on this. I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Is that, is that better?
Sorry.
What I had to say really wasn't that important anyway, so...
I would just remind you, if you are getting, transferring these things, be sure and wipe them. I, I see you're wiping them off.
Okay. You know, all I was going to say is, Mayor Miles and I have been involved with this. We went down to testify in Bullhead City on this issue.
Last year.
And, you know, this, as you said, a horrible precedent. It's the, it's the nose under the tent. There's a lot of people out there watching for where they can get cheap water so they can grow at the expense of other communities. And any extra, quote-unquote, water belongs behind the dam. It doesn't, it doesn't need to go down to Maricopa County.
Here, here. Any other comments? Then I would entertain a motion to adopt the Resolution Number 5304, opposing the transfer of 4th Priority Colorado River Water.
I'll make...
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 5304, as stated.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Wade, for seconding. We have a motion and a second to oppose the transfer of 4th Priority Colorado River Water. All in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Ayes have it. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Second order of business is a public hearing and consideration of an encroachment permit application for the Kingman Center for the Arts. Staff has received a request for a substantial encroachment permit for the Kingman City Center for the Arts located at 302 East Beale Street. Travon Pennington has submitted this request on behalf of the theater. The request is to install accessible ramps for emergency egress from the theater. The city streets and sidewalk rules and regulations require that staff post and publish notices for the proposed encroachment. Notices were posted on September 8 and published in the Daily Miner on September 27. Notices were also sent to utility companies. No comments or objections from the public or utility companies have been received as of the day of the write-up. Staff recommends approval of this encroachment request with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall provide detailed plans for the city to review and approve prior to construction. And two, the applicant shall provide insurance as required by the street policy, subject to review and approval by the city. Manager Foggan, did anybody want to add to that?
I believe that, well, I believe that the applicant is here to speak to it. I don't believe that we had any additional comments. I would leave that up. That would be Greg and his team, Greg Henry and his team, so.
Okay. We'll go ahead and, has Mr. Pennington signed up to speak?
We, he was invited.
Oh, you're invited to speak. Not as long as you stay over six feet.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Travon Pennington. I'm a resident of Kingman. My employer, Angle Homes, donated some capital to the Beale Street Theater probably 12 months ago. So I was kind of tasked to help this project along. It's complicated, taking an old building and bringing it up to code. The building was originally designed as a movie theater, not a performing arts center. And performing arts centers are about stages and lighting. And so one of this, we've hired a stage consultant. It got complicated real quick. We got an architect, a stage consultant, and engineers. But a stage consultant was kind of, we hired to make sure that every seat in the house has a good view of the stage. So that involved creating a stage that didn't exist, right? It was a theater. So we have a stage that sits approximately maybe three and a half feet off the existing floor, and that created all kinds of egress issues because those people on backstage and on the stage have to be able to exit the building, and they're at a higher elevation. So it was a, there was some complex problems. So what was required is, not only are we asking for these encroachment permits, but we also had to go buy an egress easement from the antique store next door. So we've done that. We're in the process of completing that transaction. And then we backstage, so these two encroachment permits that we're asking for, one on Third, one on Third Street out onto the sidewalk would be a ramp, probably about three foot above the sidewalk, and then it'll, over about 18 feet or so, it'll meet the sidewalk. Kind of the same thing in the alley. It will encroach probably, I don't have the drawings here, but probably about four feet into the alley and be a ramp that gets them back down to. So it was all kind of ADA and fire exit issues.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Okay, so there's no issue in your mind regarding the staff recommendations for the?
No. Yeah, we agree to all of those. And I would, but I would like to say, sometimes on these encroachment permits, there's a, if you don't do something within 12 months, like it can go away. I would ask on this, we're in the design phase. We've, our stage consultant is about wrapping that up, and we're about ready to go to design with our architect. So I don't believe we're going to start construction probably within the 12, within 12 months. I'd just like this, but we kind of didn't need to know whether this was possible so that we could, so we could design the building around these. So I'd just say, like, if we could also maybe add a caveat on there that, like, that is at some point, that this maybe could linger a little bit. I'm thinking we'll start construction within the next 18 months.
Manager Foggan, I would have to ask for, is that okay through our city?
Yeah, we would look, I would look for Carl and Greg to have to weigh in on that. We, I was not aware that there was a request for an extension past a 12-month period. So that would be a Carl and/or Greg Henry.
Mayor, members of the council, I can weigh in. Typically, if the council approves the encroachment, there's really, sometimes we put a timeframe, but it kind of runs with the property. Once it's approved, it's approved. So council ultimately does have the right to revoke them, but staff, from a staff point, we wouldn't have any objection to providing the extension that Mr. Pennington asked for. And as it was explained to me, it is, and it's my understanding, that he really needs to get this encroachment approved in order to proceed with the plans they want to take forth on the theater. And in other words, he doesn't want to spend time trying to design things for the theater and then not be able to actually build those things, since they're wanting to build, essentially extend the ADA ramps into city rights away.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Okay, does, do any of the council members have questions or comments regarding this? Mr. Pennington? Yes, Counselor Watkins.
Travon, thanks again. And I, there's a great need for this theater here in town. And of course, being a nonprofit, you know, you're dependent on funds coming in too to be able to accomplish these things. So I'm glad you brought that up, that it might take a little bit longer. But I think it's been clarified. So I think it's all, let's go forward.
Mayor, just as a reminder, this is a public hearing. So don't forget to ask if there anybody has comments.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, then I will now open the public hearing. And I will ask, are there any comments regarding the encroachment permit application for the theater?
I have not received any.
I know I'm supposed to ask three times, I think. Are there any, are you sure there are no encroachment applications?
There is nobody signed up to speak at the public hearing.
Okay. Well, then I am going to ask one more time if there's anyone in this room that would like to speak at this public hearing. Hearing nothing, that there are no comments from the public, I'm going to close the public Now I would entertain a motion to approve the encroachment permit with the conditions laid out by staff.
Mayor, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a motion and a second to approve the encroachment permit application for the Kingman Center for the Arts. All in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Pennington. And the final, and the final order of business this evening is a notice of intent to enter into a development agreement with KDP Manager LLC pursuant to ARS 9-500.11 before entering into a retail development tax incentive agreement. The city must find that the proposed tax incentive is anticipated to raise more revenue than the amount of the incentive within the duration of the agreement, and that in the absence of a tax incentive, the retail business facility would not locate in the city. These findings must be verified by an independent third party before the city can enter into the agreement. Applied Economics was hired to serve as an independent third party to verify these findings. Staff requests that the council adopt a notice of intent to enter into a development agreement with KDP Manager LLC. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. As required, we have gone through the process. We worked with Sarah Merly from Applied Economics. Sarah's done a number of excellent studies for us in the past. Recently, the most recent one had been her analysis of the Kingman Crossing Development Agreement, and was, it was great to be able to work with her again in reviewing the report from Sarah. She has done her due diligence, and the numbers are showing that we are good to proceed with the development agreement. And so this is really the first step into having, moving forward with what we've been referring to as the Sun Belt Development. And this is, for those of you that don't know, this is part of the Rancho Santa Fe traffic interchange and supporting a road system. And so her report shows that we're good to move forward. So happy to take any questions.
That's just excellent news. Are there any questions or comments for Manager Foggan?
Just a quick comment, Mayor, that that is very good news. I agree with you.
Thank you, Counselor Member Nelson. Well, given that this just seems to be good news, I will entertain, and it is good news, I will entertain a motion that we adopt a notice of intent to enter into a development agreement with KDP Manager LLC. I'll make the motion. Thank you, Counselor Mello Keener. And can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. We have a motion and a second to enter into a development agreement with KDP Manager LLC. All in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. We'll now move on to department reports. And the report tonight is the annexation report, and it looks like Manager Foggan is going to be a speaker.
Actually, this is going to be a tag team with Tina and myself. And so we're gonna, we have a little short presentation for you, that, or presentation, just a PowerPoint, just to highlight the study. So just as a reminder for everybody, is someone going to share the screen for me? Or do I just do that? I think it was last May, as I recall, it seems like forever ago. We had a discussion in council meeting, and there was a request by the Vice Mayor to look at what the annexation of the 1,800 acres that we just talked about earlier this evening would look like as far as bringing that 1,800 acres into the city in an annexation effort. And so I would be remiss if I do not start this presentation by thanking Tina and my leadership team. There was a whole bunch of folks that helped compile this information. The disciplines that this took included our public works departments, it was our ED Department, of course, finance, and police, fire, and, am I missing anybody? Oh, yes, community development. Would not want to forget those folks. And so we've really made an effort to gather as much information as we could. And we've reviewed this as a group. Each discipline was asked to go through assumptions, look at what the impact, both positive and negative, would be on their efforts, and to also make and clarify assumptions that we thought were, that was an important part of this activity. And so they did that. We came together numerous times as a group to look and talk about those assumptions, to vet them as a group, to make sure that their thought process had been covered and that we all understood it as we pushed this forward. So just for background, for those that don't know, this is the acreage that is south of the airport. It's comprised of 1,813 acres located in Mojave County, and it has been part of the airport. And those of you that know the area, the industrial park that has been growing over time is to the north of this. The airport kind of is sandwiched in between this acreage. It is urban development area designated as heavy industrial. And based on the current zoning of the property, that is how we really looked and did this evaluation, thinking and feeling that that would match the use to the north and as part of the airport. The land must be released by the FAA, which we've also covered tonight, before it can be sold or developed. And the city currently has the control of the property, and that's regardless of whether it's inside or outside city limits. And then the ballot measure for November 2020 is asking the citizens to give permission to sell the property when eventually the FAA gives approval to surplus it. Special districts, so one of the main things that we wanted to make sure we highlighted is, we know that this was suggested as something that needed to be looked at. And so special districts are something that we've found to be pretty frustrating. I know the council and the admin team have talked about this a number of times. Special districts for maintenance are just not something that is in our toolbox to use. And what, in doing the research, actually, we learned something very interesting. The county does have availability within their toolbox to do special road districts that can provide maintenance over time. I didn't actually realize that until we started looking at this. And the maintenance repair of roads within that district is just something that we cannot do. We have the ability within the city to have, to create special districts to actually build roads. So as an example, for those people that live on a dirt road within the city, if they would like to get together as a neighborhood, they can agree to be charged for building that road, and that new road will go in. But once that new road is built, those, the ongoing maintenance of the road can no longer be part of being an ongoing charge to them. That becomes a city road for us to maintain as an asphalt road instead of a gravel road. So that was, I thought, pretty enlightening. We, I did not know the county had that ability. So interestingly enough, that's kind of works for roads. As we've talked about in the past, Fire District, as an example, within the city limits, and being controlled by the city, is legislation that we proposed last year and will continue to propose. But those type of- But those type of special districts are currently not within our power to be able to control. They would, that would move to a county level. And like a Fire District would look like NACFID, as an example. So that's, I thought that that was important that we point out because I know there's been a little bit of confusion about that, or maybe not confusion, but a lack of understanding of it. And so, and we have vetted that with Andrew McGuire, just to make sure that we were making the appropriate comments with regards to maintenance, special district maintenance. So there is that piece. And some of the, I wanted to point out just some of the important development assumptions. Felt that these were important for everybody to understand. So 50%, we assumed 50% buildout of that acreage in 15 years with a total buildout at 30 years. That would actually be 30 to 35% faster than the existing park. But we thought that was fair because the existing park won't have a new TI and road. And so this 1,800 acres will have access to a new, the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway and the traffic interchange. We also, 1,650 total estimate of developable acreage. 925 will be done by year 15. There's also a 20% increase in building square foot per acre compared to the existing park. We felt, and the ED team felt, as they did the research on this, that that was also a fair assumption. Then the next one is that 50% of the buildings will be leased versus owned. That may be a little bit aggressive, but our understanding has been, in looking at this, that perhaps more companies may be looking to not own the buildings, but to lease the buildings. So we used 50% versus the 38% that we're seeing in the existing park, just by reasons of the fact that how companies approach owning buildings versus leasing has changed over the years since the original industrial park was developed. And then we have 55 acres per year to be developed with the exception of year five, which we just thought was a kind of a place to account for the averaging and having, and that year being 155 acres, knowing that it's just not a flat, you know, growth over time, that there will be fluctuations. So we did our best to kind of anticipate some bigger sales of property in that. And then that we, really looking at where we are with the TI and the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway, that we, our first development, would we really go into effect in 2024? Maybe starting construction earlier than that, but the development really gets kicked off in 2024. So impacts of annexation, service revenue expenditure impacts of the area being annexed. And for the financial piece, and just kind of talking about compiling this, is really where I turn it over to Ms. Tina. And so I'll wipe this down for you, Ms. Tina. Yeah, I got it for you. Push all the buttons for you, too.
All right, so, good evening. So as Mr. Foggan stated, the next section are the actual impacts of annexation. And I do want to, as just a reminder, and really for reminder for my team, too, we had, we reminded ourselves of this quite often as we got together, is that we had to remember that some of the impacts that were going to be experienced would be experienced whether or not the land was inside the city limits or outside the city limits. There were many discussions that we had that we said, wait, 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 that's going to happen regardless. For instance, land sales, no matter what happens, where the property is located, we're going to experience, we're going to get to recognize those land sales. So as we go through this, there may be questions that you might have as well regarding that, and please, please ask. So many divisions within the city. And we asked all of the divisions who might be impacted and what city services might be impacted, and there were really just a handful. And we looked at fire, police, community development, streets, and engineering were the services that were going to be impacted and that would be impacted by the annexation. And so as we looked at those services that were impacted, we'll get to the costs of actually what we would experience with that impact. But I wanted to start with the actual revenues that would actually be impacted first, start on a very positive note, because it is a very positive note. So with all of the construction that will be happening, based on the development assumptions over that 15-year period, we've got 55 acres that are being developed, almost 400,000 square feet in buildings per year that are going to be constructed. We've got street infrastructure that we would pay, we would collect construction sales tax on, as well as wastewater. So the construction sales tax will be significant for the general fund. There will also be commercial leasing taxes. Mr. Foggan alluded to, we're anticipating or assuming that 50% of the buildings out there will be leased. And so we, in the city of Kingman, charge a 2% commercial leasing tax. And so we would collect that, and that would compound year over year as buildings become leased. And then, of course, if it's inside the city limits, we're going to collect building permit fees, as well as plan reviews and zoning and inspections. And that's in community development, so the general fund, as well as in the streets fund for street reviews and drainage for the water fund. So a few different funds and a few different divisions will recognize an increase there. And then assuming that the impact fees do get adopted as presented this evening, so no changes, there would also be a collection of impact fees, new development, phase for growth, so we would also experience an increase in our impact fees. There is one area that will have a decrease, and those are our water user fees. Right now, the city charges a higher rate for our customers outside of the city limits, anywhere between 22 and 35%, depending on the fee. So there will be a decrease in our water user fees. When we did, I do want to point out that when we did look at the revenues, we took into consideration that construction costs were going to increase, so that's going to increase our construction sales tax. Additionally, that commercial leasing rates would increase. And so we took that into consideration, year over year, review fees as well. So we did try to take those things into consideration. So then what do those revenue sources look like? And so we tried to break it out by the actual revenue source, by fund, and then by our total operating fund revenues. And so when we look at our total operating fund revenues, as time goes on, and this is compounding, so for the first year, we see that our total operating fund revenues would increase by about $570,000. Compounded at year five, almost $4 million. At year 10, over $8 million. And then at year 15, $13.3 million. And so that is pretty significant. And again, we look at that construction sales tax number, that's a large number. But it is also important to point out that construction sales tax are one-time revenues, so once it's built out, we lose those revenues. I did include the impact fee fund on here. As we reiterated and discussed at our last work session, impact fees can be used, but they cannot be used for operations and maintenance, so it would be just for growth projects. But again, important to point out. So now let's get into the costs associated for providing the services that would need to be provided in that area. And so when we looked at the different services, we know that fire, police, community development, streets, and engineering would be impacted. We also know that some of, because of the growth, that our impact fee fund would also be hit. We would be able to purchase a new fire engine as time went on. We also know that we would be able to purchase some of our police vehicles through the impact fee fund, so those would also experience an increase. There would be a decrease in a few of our enterprise or business funds. And although it is a small amount, I wanted to be sure that we captured everything. And that is really just because all of our business funds pay into service, the general fund, so finance, HR, city manager, city attorney, city clerk. And as the water fund or as the engineering team adds people, it decreases the cost that the other business funds have to pay. So I wanted to be sure that we captured that. So when we asked the divisions to look at the different impacts, some of those impacts are not, they do not occur until later in the years. So really, in year one, year two, there isn't a significant impact. But as time goes on and that area develops and it requires a higher workload or more demand on our services, that's where we start to notice those expenditures and those costs for the annexation of that area. And just like we did with the revenues, we took into consideration that costs of providing those services also increase, personnel costs, equipment, vehicles, that sort of thing. So when we look at the expenditures, and I do want to point out that I did catch on my impact fee fund expenditure increase, that I had an erroneous figure in the report, and I needed to correct that before tonight's meeting. And so I did make those adjustments. It's just over $100,000 adjustment, and I will cover that as we go through these expenditures. So just as we talked about in the revenues, we are going to also talk about the expenditures, same sort of thing, broken out by the divisions and the different types of costs that would be affected, and then by fund, and then the overall operating costs or the operating fund increase for those expenditures. And so we'll look at year one, as I said, not much in year one. There isn't a lot of cost in the beginning of the development, so a $320,000 increase in expenditures. But again, as time goes on and as streets are needing to be maintained, and then we bring on more personnel for community development and more personnel and another team for the Fire Department, that's when we start to see things increase. So by about year 10, when I get to the fiscal impact, I'll cover that. But by about year 10, it gets to be expensive. And so at year 15, again, this is compounded year over year, we see an increase in our operating expenditures of about $21.5 million. And so the last slide on our numbers is really looking at the difference between the revenues that we're collecting versus the expenditures that we will be spending. And that, again, is also based on fund and then our total operating fiscal impact. And as we look out into the years, into the future years, again, year one is not so severe, year five certainly isn't. But once we get to that year 10, which is when fire comes onboard and when the streets start to become expensive, that's when we start to recognize that the revenues that are being received are not meeting those ongoing costs for providing those services. So you'll see that there is a revenue deficiency by year 15 of just over $8.1 million. And again, I do have the impact fee fund fiscal impact as well, because we will be able to use some of those monies to buy some of our equipment, and wanted to be sure to show you that, too. So those are the numbers and what we, as a city team, put together. And I think with that, we're ready to take questions and comments associated with any of the data, and I know all of the team members are attending as well, as far as any of the assumptions throughout the report.
Thank you, Director Mullein. Is this mic on? Okay. So according to the fiscal impact, year 10 is when this turns negative in terms of fiscal impact. And it looks like, of course, part of that is streets and maintenance, which parallels our problem in the city, anyway. So anything that we do ultimately to address street improvements for the city would also impact this potentially by year 10, if there is a solution for pavement preservation by that time, which I hope there is. We definitely need it. So these numbers are subject to change depending on policies and initiatives that the city undertakes between now and 10 years from now, between now and a year from now. It could change the dynamic of this.
Absolutely.
I had one question also about the special districts, especially that part about the county has the toolbox containing a special district for streets and we don't. Does that mean it's just something we haven't done, or is that because we're just not legally required or able to do it?
It's my understanding we're not able to do that based on what, well, based on Carl Cooper's assessment as well, and then also reaching out to Andrew McGuire, that we do not have that in our toolbox.
So we cannot go through that type of special district? The county can, okay? And so the special districts that we could do are limited to what for this type of?
So nothing really for maintenance, as far as the big maintenance, which are streets. You know, the Fire District is something different, we can't do fire. But for the maintenance of streets, which we felt was the biggest piece of this, we don't have the ability to pay for that. I do, I do want to mention something on the streets that I didn't, I should have pointed out, is that as we look at those streets we're putting in, I think the assumption is about eight miles. And in the initial years of streets, it doesn't cost a lot of money to maintain. And the Streets Department went ahead and put together the figures for the full life cycle of a lane mile and for those, all of those eight miles, which is a 25-year life cycle. And what that cost overall is, just so that you're aware, what would impact this eventually is that's a cost of over $24 million that will at some point hit this area. So I wanted to be sure to point that out. That is an important piece in our streets assumptions.
Keeps coming back to bite us, doesn't it?
I know.
Are any other comments or questions? I'm sure there are.
Mayor, just why people are thinking about maybe potential questions or comments. Again, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but this analysis, you know, it's interesting, as Tina and I talked about it, we looked at the numbers and tried to make sure our assumptions were correct. It just became more and more glaringly obvious that the missing taxing leg that the city does not have, which is property tax, changes this analysis from night to bright day.
Yes.
And, you know, what's interesting is that having the industrial park and a future industrial park come in and be part of the city, and if there was, if there was property tax as part of our formula, it would actually ultimately reduce the property tax across the city by having industrial property tax. So it's just, it really is a glaringly missing piece that we simply don't have access to. It's not, we're not, you know, it's not, we're not crying over it, but it's just, it's a reality that we face. And this, I think that this really showed, showed us how much that's truly missed.
Certainly does. Thank you. Questions, comments?
I did have a question for staff, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Waite.
Thank you. And this is just, it kind of piggybacks off of the comment that the mayor made, and this is going to be a question directed to staff. And it is with respect to the drafting and implementing of the special districts for the maintenance of roads. So Manager Foggan, you mentioned that the city has made efforts towards creating a different... district or something to that effect in the past. So I was just curious as to how the city could accomplish this, if it's possible, and what efforts has the city done so far?
So as you recall, last year, we developed legislation to allow cities across Arizona. We were obviously wanting it for us, but it would have been beneficial to all cities. But what we were doing is sponsoring legislation that would give cities the ability to ask the residents to create a special district within the city that the board of that special district would be the city council. And in efforts, we, Tom Dorn and his team lobbied the legislature and individual legislators in an effort to get this bill sponsored. We actually did get a sponsor, grateful for Representative Cobb on that, but it never got out of committee. We actually had a committee chair that refused to let it get out of committee. Not a lot that we could do about that. And so it kind of, it basically died because they wouldn't bring it forward. And then, of course, we don't know what ultimately would have happened because the legislation or the legislature ended up canceling the rest of the session. And even if it had gone out of committee, it was questionable whether it would have moved forward. So what Mayor Miles and I did as continuing effort is that we actually made a plea to the League of Oregon, Oregon, who passed ghosts. The Arizona League of Cities and Towns have different committees that actually entertain ideas on what legislation should be a priority for the league. And so we presented this to the league committee on taxing and finance. And I thought we made a passionate plea to have it be considered. And we had mayors and several council members from other communities give advice that we raise sales tax and that we abandon this idea because it was a tax, which I didn't appreciate and actually shot back on and just said, look, this piece of legislation asks the citizens, it would allow the citizens to create a vote on this special district. It's not a tax. It's an invitation for our citizens to basically accept this. And that fell on deaf ears. So moving forward, as we start approaching the legislative session for 2021, this will be back on as an effort by Dorn Policy Group and myself and any other team members that we call on and all of our elected officials to push it forward. But that is a piece of this that we're talking about. It's a special service district within the city that would allow for ongoing payment of operations. And that currently would, the way we're proposing it, only apply to, we've left it with applying to fire and perhaps expanding that to public safety that would be able to include police. So the current effort that we're making does not include road maintenance, mostly because road maintenance isn't really, it's not sexy and a lot of people don't pay attention to it. So that's been our push. And so far, I'm sad to report that we've not been successful, but that's what we've done.
I would add that we did point out very clearly, it was a ballot measure for the citizens. It was, and, you know, was very, I think, well-presented. The city had strong information to that, and so did Tom Dorn and his group. And it was very disheartening because the person that really declared it a tax and would not move it forward was from a very urban populated area that don't have the issues we do in rural areas, but was very passionate against any tax. But I think, you know, we hang in the game and we go for it again this coming year. So I'm sorry, you were going to say something, Counselor Waite?
You know, just as a follow-up, I'm assuming that we don't know the specific reason why it didn't get past the committee. And I'm assuming that if we did know the reason, then we would likely attempt to make, you know, changes to the proposal through, you know, Tom Dorn and that avenue. Is that correct?
So we believe we do know that it was perceived as a new tax.
Okay.
And there was no opportunity to speak to it at the committee level because the committee chair would not put it up for hearing.
Okay, so it's just a misunderstanding by somebody who probably was half-listening or whatever the case may be. So I'm assuming we have addressed that issue and have specifically targeted that with our new proposal. Is that correct?
Our proposal remains the same. Being able to talk to the individuals that control it getting to the committee was not within our control. But we know that Tom Dorn had contacted the chair and the chair was unwilling to talk to him.
Hmm. Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Madam Mayor, I would have some questions, if I may.
Certainly, please, Mayor.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the presentation and all the work that you've put into this report, you and your staff and everybody involved. Thank you. The first thing I would say is, you know, right now, nothing currently exists within the boundaries of phase two. Can you hear me? Okay, okay. And so now I think is because of that, this is really the best time, the most ideal time to annex it because there is no demand for services out there right now. And I think that if you, or if the city waits until it's developed and then tries to annex it later, it's never going to happen. I think you'll end up in a situation like what we have in phase one or in a place like New Butler-Kingman, where it becomes impossible to annex. So that's the first thing I would say. In your revenue assumptions, if it's not annexed in the city, we would lose out on any and all development investment fees, right? If the council adopts those next year. And I didn't see those, even with an assumption that maybe something like that would get adopted, that I didn't see any of those development investment fees modeled out and included in the report, just as a hypothetical.
They're in.
Were they in there?
They're across, yeah.
They're on the fiscal.
Okay, my bad, excuse me. The city would lose control of the planning and the zoning of the development. I think that it would be up to the county. Is that correct? If it's not in the city limits?
So the city owns the property, so we would go through development. It's actually kind of interesting, as I've thought about it and talked about it with the team, that how the original airport developed was really kind of, for lack of a better term, a planned development because it, you know, the roads were considered, they were kind of, for the most part, private. And then we've been working on getting those roads taken over by the county. I actually think that the development process would look a lot different for phase two in that we would go through the county process to develop, but it would be much more organized and laid out where as we went through the development process, we would be subject to the county's development process. But if it's in the city, even though we own the property, we would be subject to our own development requirements. So I don't think, there's not really a loss of control. It's just, it's who we're going to be subject to as far as the development goes. And with that, interestingly enough, if we went through the proper development process, we could actually have the roads built to the proper standards so that, just like any other development within the county, that the roads would be part of the county road system. And so I don't know that it's a loss of control. It's just, it's a matter of if we develop the, if we go through the county land use process, then dedication of those roads to the county system would be, at least my thinking is that it would be much easier because we wouldn't treat it like private roads and how the original industrial park developed. So the county has just different size requirements, different when subdivision has to occur versus the city. So there's differences, but I wouldn't say that there's a negative to either way. They're just different.
So if I'm hearing you right, you're saying that your plan would be to continue to petition the county to adopt the roads in phase two into the county road maintenance system is what you're saying?
So I wouldn't petition it. I think we would go through a development process that would include the county acknowledging through the development that the roads are part of the county system. So it wouldn't be petitioning to adopt them. It would be petitioning, it would be going through the development process that they would be county-owned roads.
Well, I hope you get the votes for that.
Well, yeah.
Something I saw in the report, you mentioned that there was going to be maybe 50% of phase two that was leased. Is that by some sort of a rule, that it can only be 50%? I was curious, why is it 50%? Because really, you know, those industrial leases, those are every year, like those are ongoing revenue sources.
Correct.
And it would just seem like a good idea to try to maximize leasing of phase two, more than 50%.
Right. And that's why in the analysis, the current industrial parks at 38%, and that's why we felt like 50% was a spot that we could hang our hat on. It's above what we currently have. And in the EDs, kind of through their research, they were kind of finding that that 50% was what in their visits with developer, industrial developers, that that's what they were finding. So that's where we landed on the 50%.
Got it. But when it all comes down to it, the city could really dictate to say, hey, look, we want to, it's our intent to lease 75%.
Well, you could set any goal you want, but you'd have, to be able to do that, you have to put the money up to build the spec buildings to make sure that happens.
Right. Or you could partner with a private developer to build it and.
Right. Yep.
Another, there's an important part I didn't see, and maybe I missed this too, but on the revenue sources, I didn't see the economic and fiscal impact estimates of the new payroll, those people that are going to be creating this new demand. I didn't see the economic and fiscal impacts on new sales tax to the community from all those people. I know that we had the applied economics report that modeled out some of that stuff. I didn't see any of the new payroll that was going to be coming to the city. That would be helpful to sort of pay off some of these general funded expenditures.
So as Ms. Tina started her conversation, I'll just reiterate it. We did not include things that were going to happen whether this property was inside the city or outside the city. As this property develops, it will absolutely create new jobs. It will actually create new money to come into the community. But it does not affect whether this is in the city or not. These people earning the money there will still be spending the money inside the city limits, and that's where the sales tax generated. And it ultimately doesn't matter if this property is in the county or in the city.
Okay, thank you. My next question, I've only got a couple more left, has to do with automatic aid response agreements. Do we have those types of agreements? I know we have one with NACFed and KFD, right?
Yep.
Do we have one with the sheriff's office and KPD as well?
Yeah, we do. And we help them and they help us.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do both of those agencies go out to the industrial park right now?
Right now, the calls for service really belong to the sheriff's department. And I'm not aware of us responding to any calls that far out.
And with our fire?
Fire is automatic, we have an automatic aid, so especially for industrial calls. If the alarm goes off for NACFed, we're immediately paying attention. And if the call comes out, we will absolutely roll to help them.
Good.
Yep.
I only ask because if we're already going out there, I was wondering why it's an incremental cost under these assumptions. That's why I asked that.
Yep. No, it's a good question.
And the last thing I had to ask was, I know that there was a section on special taxing districts, but it looked pretty small. And I understand, you know, these are available to the county, these are available to the city, but is there anything that would, as the sole owner of the property, preclude the city from requesting to work with the county to establish some sort of a street maintenance district?
We would absolutely work with the county to do that.
And then there's a board, you know, and I don't know all the specifics, but is there a possibility for the city to ask the county to help them form that? And then for the city to basically place the voting members of the district board? And then that would be a funding mechanism to do street maintenance?
Yeah, as long as.
Could you do a landscape maintenance district the same way, overlay it on the same property?
As long as it remains in the county, that's a tool. And if it's in the city, there's no way in which we could do that with the county.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'd like to ask some questions.
Just go ahead.
If we could go back to the fiscal impact?
Yep.
So some of the things I wanted to ask about, like, it was brought up about the cost of water. We charge more if you live outside of the city. So if this stays outside the city, we're assuming we would make more money. But couldn't we just change the fee schedule so that all industrial businesses pay the same rate as what they do outside the city now?
So absolutely. This analysis was based on existing levels of service, existing policies and rate structures in place.
Sure. Yeah, I think where I was going is just that there are a few negatives on here that I think that could easily be fixed, especially since we're talking about four years until the area even starts being developed, like just changing the fee schedule for solid waste, wastewater and water. And then I liked what the mayor had to say about, you know, we're going to have to address these roads anyway. And so I'd hate to be shackled by roads, we're not going to annex because we can't afford the roads, when really we know we can't continue down this path. We're going to have to hit that problem head-on and change it no matter what. So my only other comment here to the council is that I believe that we need to move ahead, annex this property, just because this is, I agree with Travis, this is our only opportunity. We're not going to do it after the fact. And I, you know, I feel that it's irresponsible and reckless to have property that's ours, that belongs to the city, but trying to pawn off the maintenance onto the county or hoping that the county will get a special taxing district to pay for the streets. I think if they were willing to do that, they would have already done it for the roads out at the airport and in phase one of the industrial park that desperately need help. And so I don't think that we should plan on, you know, them coming to our rescue. And it isn't fair for us to even ask that. So with this being our largest asset that we're really hanging our hat on, we know that it's going to greatly impact our community in a positive way, the city needs to take responsibility for it, annex it, and then have full control of that area. And we have plenty of time to address these shortfalls, as we know we're going to have to address them anyway. So I would like to see us move forward with the annexation. And I'd even go so far as to say that I think we should have a conversation with the county and NACFed to make a long-term plan for them so that they're not, so NACFed isn't so reliant on phase one in the airport. So at some point, we can bring that under city control as well.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. Other comments? Yeah, Manager Foggan? Oh. Thank you, Counselor Staley. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, this is a department report, and so there is no action.
Okay, this is a department report, and so there is no action for the council to take this evening. I have heard a request for it to come forth as an issue for actual determination by the council. And so, at this point, I would consider that that's something that probably we should take on as some, a future agenda. There's a lot of information here, there's a lot of information that's been given today. I truly appreciate all the work by every department that's gone into this. I agree with Councilor Staley that this is our, this is a huge asset for this city. And when I've visioned the future of this airport and industrial park, and I've mentioned this to Manager Foggan, I see many McCarran, you know? I want a freight hub and a multimodal transloading, just great enterprise, vibrant enterprise. I really see that. And I also think that some of these projections can be changed tremendously by actions of this or future councils to address things that we're going to have to address anyway, or some new opportunities to address. But I think it's something we should bring forth. And this is a department report, so I'm not sure if there's, we can't make a vote, but I would just concur with that request.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that it?
Wasn't sure, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
It was really excellent. The work in here is excellent. It's just we have to, we have to look at transforming the future rather than just living with what some of the issues are. Okay. So now we have announcements by mayor, council members, city manager. Limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars. And I'll start with Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor. Our report on the Census 2020 effort is that the Census Bureau has been told that they are going to continue counting people until the end of October. Pretty much our part in that is done, other than to help the Census Bureau. We remain the fourth-best reporting community in the whole state of Arizona, which we are very proud of. And I think that we are very, we're going to be, end up being very close to 75% self-reported by the time it's all said and done, which is wildly greater than where we were in 2010. So, very pleased with that. Other than that, I do not have any announcements.
Thank you. Councilor Meloquino?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Nothing, ma'am?
Okay. Vice Mayor, I'll just use yours first.
No announcement tonight, thank you.
On Zoom, Councilor Waite?
I have nothing to add at this time, thank you.
And Councilor Staley?
No announcements tonight, thank you.
Okay. Have I missed anyone? Oh, Councilor Nelson?
It's okay, I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, I knew I'd missed someone. And for me, I just, let's say we have several meetings coming up again on the water issue and just marking calendars, if you can, for the Tri-City Council, which will be on the 21st at 10 o'clock. And that will be a Zoom meeting for those who can participate. I think it'll have some interesting discussion points. Okay, item nine, council requests for future reports and updates. Do we have any? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, after listening to... Can you hear me? Okay. After listening to the presentation today on the development investment fees, you know, pretty soon, in the near future, the whole east bench of Kingman will be opened up. And with all these things going on, I think it's important that the city takes a look at finally creating some sort of an annexation plan to get ahead of it. Because, you know, once that whole east bench is opened up, if you don't have an annexation plan in place, you're probably set up to see Butler New Kingman 2.0. So it's good to get ahead of it.
Thank you. Any other council requests? Was that a request or? That was a suggestion, okay. Well, we are going to, the annexation plan actually is the suggestion. And I think that's a good one. I would, I'm just going to mention, this is not really a request, it's an add-on to the annexation issue. I had some contact from a person that really wanted the city to consider annexation up 93 toward White Hills, where there's some truck stops and things of that nature currently. But it is important that people know that you have to be contiguous, it has to be contiguous to the city. And so you'd have to annex all the way up there. And at this point, I think the issues that we're looking at for annexation or the targeted areas are really the ones that are the correct ones to look at right now. So that's kind of an announcement. But no request right now further than that. Anything else? Yes, please, go ahead.
I just wanted to, you know, I hope, Vice Mayor, that when you get over there at the county, that you encourage partnership with the city. And, you know, I think that we both win when we do that. So I hope you encourage that relationship.
We're getting off.
We're going to pin them down on that.
We got to focus back.
Yeah. I have a feeling that is going to happen. It'll be good. So if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
All second.
Oh, thank you, Councilor Nelson. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We're agreeing to adjourn. Thank you.